Problem with that a little bit, Don, maybe you can chime in here, um, but because we are talking about attorney-client matters, I think I need, I do think I'm wrong. I think I need a full board, or at least a quorum of the board, to authorize that.
I, I think so, especially in the, in the, uh, uh, in the sense where, where we need a waiver of that attorney-client privilege.
Yeah, I think so. I apologize, I apologize, Todd. I don't think we can go forward without a quorum.
Guys, I'm, I'm on the phone, sorry.
Oh, there we go.
Yep, sorry, guys. I apologize, just a little bit late this morning.
Um, 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 I, I'm, I'll just go ahead and I, I think most, I think there's like ten or twelve people in the audience and, um, uh, I, I will say that, um, I, I have not included, um, Commissioner Moyer in any of this, um, because the minute the recall started, we, we con- uh, instructed what's referred to often as a Chinese wall, so that he wouldn't be, um, wouldn't be privy to the information. Uh, and let's just talk about the executive sessions then for a second.
Hold on, Todd. Do we need to call to order formally?
Oh, yeah, you do.
Okay.
That's Jeff, right?
Uh, Jeff, do you want to do that, or do you want, Todd's got the agenda here in front of him?
Guys, let's let Todd do that, if he would, please.
All right, um, I will call this meeting, uh, the Board of County Commissioners', uh, special meeting to order on June twenty-third at eight oh nine. Um, this is being held at, uh, the Rio Blanco County Historical Courthouse in Meeker. Um, it will be livestream via the, uh, RBC, uh, YouTube channel. To provide public input, please call nine seven oh, eight seven eight, nine four three two. And the, um, first item on the agenda is the Fledge of Allegiance. All right, any changes to the June twenty-third agenda? All right. Um, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda without any changes.
The chairman and I would approve, or make a motion to approve the agenda without any changes.
And I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing none, Sean, would you please call the rule?
Restor?
Hi.
Hey.
Hi. All right, um, number two, business? Line item A.
And Todd, I gotta be off my phone at this point, and I can't, I can't read that, so, sorry, guys.
No problem. Um, line item A is the discussion of legal advice received from Todd M. Starr regarding the handling and/or release of particular executive sessions and hostile work environment claims, and authorizing to act on either matter as directed.
No, I would second that motion.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't a motion.
I think it's, it wasn't a motion, guys, it's just a discussion item, I'm sorry.
I think it's just that the discussion item, I think that's my cue to, to start, if I may.
Good, yes, please.
Let, let's talk about executive sessions. Um, there, there's been a lot of, uh, press in, in, in Rio Blanco County about the number, um, of executive sessions that have been held, and truth be told, there, there were a, a number, a, a large number of executive sessions. Um, but the fact of the matter is, as I spelled out in, in my, uh, letter, um, you know, just because you have two sessions or twenty seconds, statute doesn't matter. What, what matters is are they, um, are they convened properly, and, and more specifically, um, are the executive sessions being held, um, for one of the reasons, uh, set forth uh, in the statute, and, and is the discussion within the executive session uh, limited to the, the reason, um, the reason it was called? Over the, just over the course of twenty twenty, uh, we, we were dealing with two different appeals from Utah Gas. Um, we were dealing, uh, with negotiations with Chevron, uh, which are, is a substantial claim. Um, we were dealing with Strata, uh, Yuba and Ubat. Um, and, and that, that's just those issues that come to my mind. There were, you know, there were also a number of other issues. Um, in addition, there's a, there's law out there, um, in the form of case law, the Arkansas Valley Publishing Company versus Lake County Board of County Commissioners. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, that involved the Board of County Commissioners, um, terminating the employment of a county administrator. Uh, and, and they tried to convene an executive session, um, and they did not do it properly, uh, but the, uh, Colorado Court of Appeals, uh, allowed it under the day-to-day supervision exception, uh, to the Colorado Sunshine Act. Um, and certainly, um, in Rio Blanco County, where there is no county administrator, um, you commissioners, whether you three or include former Commissioner, uh, Si, uh, um, you know, there were, there was a lot of day-to-day, uh, supervision discussion. And, um, I generally, um, advise the board to notice those as executive sessions, um, when possible, uh, so that even though it's not open to the public, it's a little more transparent because it, it alerts the, the public that you are in fact gathering as a group to discuss county business. Um, so that's kind of the, the thirty thousand-foot view. Now let's, let's narrow it down a little bit and talk about, uh, the Dave Moreland issues. And, and I, I don't know, um, how many executive sessions were convened for the purpose of, of, um, either talking to or talking about, um, Mr. Moreland. Uh, I, um, and I, and I think some of those executive sessions on occasion might have been multiple, multiple issues might have been discussed, and, um, so uh, here, here's, um, let me, let me put a place card there, because there's another thing in general that I should talk about. Um, counties throughout the state, not just Rio Blanco County, in fact, I'm not familiar with a single county that does not do this. Don, if, if I'm wrong, in, in your experience, please speak up, or even Kent, if you know of, of another example, please speak up, but certainly the vast majority, if not all sixty-four counties, make it a, a practice to destroy the recording of the executive session ninety days after the executive session, because that's allowed by the law. Uh, and that's what makes the most sense, um, in legally, in terms of operating essentially a thirty million dollar corporation. So it's not, when, when we talk about, um, paid recordings of the executive sessions having been destroyed, it, it's not a Richard Nixon thing, it's not, it's not just in the Dave Moreland instance, it's not just Rio Blanco County. Um, that's, that's, um, what you might refer to as a best practice standard for counties throughout Colorado. Um, so there, there are a number of executive sessions that were held in twenty twenty uh, that the recording, the recording simply does not exist anymore, because that's the way the county has always operated. Um, then, uh, to throw a little bit of a wrench in that, when the, when the, uh, recall petition, the first recall effort started, I, I think it was when it started, certainly the recall was being talked about at this time, because Commissioner Moyer uh, had engaged his own independent counsel. And, um, Rio Blanco County received from, uh, Suzanne Terhar, uh, a, a letter that we refer to in legal terms as a litigation hold. Um, again, this is a, this is a common tool, um, used in the legal field when you're getting into, uh, for instance, I, I've got a personal injury case going on, I'm suing Telluride Ski Area, and I sent them a litigation hold so that they wouldn't destroy any of their security, uh, camera, uh, footage. Uh, and that's what, that's what was provided to, uh, Rio Blanco County, was a demand for a litigation hold, so we, we, once we received that, um, from that date forward, uh, we didn't destroy any of the executive session recordings. So that, so there are, um, there are then, I think, um, recordings that the county, there are executive sessions that the county has recordings for, and executive sessions that the county, uh, as a normal course of business, does not have recordings for. Um, then, uh, the, I, I think it was the last two, I may be wrong, it may have been three, it might even have been as many as four, but I think it was the last two executive sessions, the Board of County Commissioners uh, met just with Dave Moreland. They, they excluded me from the session, and, and in fact, I say just with Dave Moreland, uh, Roy Kenny may or may not have been a part of that, I, I simply don't recall, because I wasn't in the, uh, apparently, uh, Mr. Moreland asked, and he was given permission to record a session, uh, one or more of those sessions. Um, I, I believe, and I've consulted with Attorney Sturman, and, and I think he agrees with me, and he's on the phone, so he'll speak up if I'm wrong. There, there is a case, there is a case out there, Guminia versus, uh, City of Sterling, uh, G-U-M-I-N-A, and it holds that a city council's failure to comply strictly with open meetings law requirements rendered such sessions in which council discussed city employee matters, open meetings, and their recorded minutes were open to the public. I believe that the, uh, cor- the, uh, the Colorado Sunshine Act that allows for executive sessions authorizes just one recording. And so when the Board of County Commissioners gave permission to Mr. Moreland to record it, they were no longer in strict compliance with the open meetings law, uh, and therefore, by operation of case law, those meetings, uh, should now be treated as open meetings. Let me, let me pause right there for a second, because this might be a good place. Don, do you disagree with, with what I'm, how I'm interpreting the law at this point?
No, I actually, uh, uh, have the, uh, City of Sterling open now, and that's exactly what it says, if there's not compliance with the open meeting laws, uh, that the meeting is, uh, uh, considered, uh, 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 open, and not an executive session meeting.
Um, and, and maybe it would be a good time here to give Mr. Moreland's attorney, Kent, uh, Kent, I, I hope I can call you Kent, and, and don't have to be formal and say Mr. Borcher, but I, I will if that's what you prefer.
Uh, yeah, fine.
Thank you, sir. It, you know, you've, this isn't your first rodeo, you know quite a bit about open meetings laws, and, um, do, do you disagree with, with how I'm interpreting that law at this point?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. So, so what that means to me um, is that if, if, if the board should probably take some formal action and say, oops, uh, those meetings weren't convened in strict compliance, and then there, therefore they are open meetings. Uh, and I believe, uh, i- if the county has a recording of those meetings, those recordings should be able to be made public. Uh, and likewise, if Dave Moreland is in possession of a recording of those meetings, uh, he, that he should be able to make his recordings public without any jeopardy to him. Um, a- and normally, if somebody records or repeats what goes on in an executive session, um, they, they face some pretty severe consequences. I, I believe that that's a misdemeanor. Um, but I'm not, I'm certainly not suggesting, and I don't mean to imply that Dave committed a misdemeanor, because he didn't. What, what I, what I know, having heard one of the recordings, is that the board gave him permission, and that, that makes it fine. Um, so, so there's, there's that. Um, the, the, the other piece of that then is, what about those meetings that Dave may or may not have recorded, and may or may not have had permission from the board? Or, or that, um, you know, those other earlier meetings, so to speak, um. If, if the board would like, uh, I think it would be wise, um, and I think what I was suggested in my correspondence was that we, we give Dave Moreland and Roy Kenny, because he was part of at least
Todd, was Todd?
Yes.
It's Roy Gilbert, not Roy Kenny.
Saying Roy Kenny, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Roy. I've got my, I've got my, uh, Range Lee Rolodex mixed up in my head. I apologize. Mr. Gil- Mr. Gilbert, um, and Mr. Moreland, you know, uh, I'll, I'll work with Kent, and, and let's craft a release. Um, and, and, you know, let's give us a week or so to get that release signed and filed with the county, and assuming that Mr. Gilbert also, uh, also signs that release, which led to believe he's, he's inclined to do, um, but I don't want to pressure him, but assuming everybody signs that release, uh, then the board should declare all of those prior meetings, to the extent that they were discussing, uh, Mr. Moreland or Mr. Gilbert, uh, to be a public, and to release the recordings, if they exist, uh, about, about, uh, those topics. Um, I, I want to, I want to make clear that to the extent we were talking, you know, we spent a half hour talking about Dave and Roy, and then a half hour talking about Chevron, uh, I don't think the board has any intention to desire, or nor should it, uh, open up, uh, any of those, those other topics that were discussed. Um, but that, that would mean that Dave Moreland would be free in the recall race to say, this is what happened in those executive sessions, and similarly, uh, Commissioner Moyer would be able to, uh, give his version of what happened in there. If a recording exists, and it's in the possession of the county, that is the formal record and the official record of what happened, and, and, and we would make so much of it as dealt with Moreland and, and, uh, Gilbert public. Um, and so that's, that's kind of, that's kind of where I, I come down on the executive sessions, maybe I should pause there and go on to the hostile claims after anybody has any questions or comments on executive sessions.
I have a question, but I go basically.
You want to, is it about executive session?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, you'd come up here and state your name?
My name is Lucas Turner. I work for the Rio Blanco Herald Times. Can you meet, I'm Mr. Starr.
I can. Lucas, how are you this morning?
Good, how are you today?
I'm well, thank you.
Okay. So I think we're discussing executive sessions and recording of executive sessions, um, and electronic recordings. Uh, let's see. Um, you might have already answered this, and what you were just talking about, it kind of sounded like you did. Uh, but I was taking, I was taking some photos, actually, so I kind of missed part of that, but, um, my, my original question to you, I was just curious, what, what exactly, I think maybe you said this earlier as well, was what was the waiver and release? Um, and what would have allowed the county to disclose? So would we have been presented with all documents, county documents, official, uh, recordings, and otherwise relating to the non-appointment of Dave Moreland as a result of that waiver being signed, or would it, you know, as you were just sort of describing, allowed Commissioner Moyer and Dave Moreland to sort of tell their side of the story outside of any kind of official record? Does that make sense?
That, that's a great question, uh, and, and I, I appreciate that question, because it also, um, it, it also reminds me and, and allows me to address that there's kind of, we're, we're peeling an onion here, peeling back an onion, and there's a couple of different layers. Um, the first layer is the open, open meetings layer, a- a- and the second layer is the employer-employee uh, layer, and that is that Mr. Moreland, regardless of whether or not the contents of an executive session are released, still has some, um, privacy right, I think, for lack of a, a better technical term, privacy right uh, in, in his employee file. So I, I do not, uh, absent, absent, unless Mr. Moyer, or excuse me, unless Mr. Mo- Moreland were to sign a release allowing the board or the county to release his entire file, uh, those portions of the file that were redacted in response to the Rio Blanco Herald Times' um, um, Cora request would remain redacted, because he, that, that is a separate and apart from the Cora law, that, that's redacted because of his privacy interest. Um, it would be great if Mr. Moreland would waive that, and the whole file could just be open, public. Um, but that's, that's up to him, that's his decision. Uh, and the same, the same would be true, uh, for Mr. Gilbert as well. Um, so, uh, does that answer your question, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, I think so, and, and part of the reason I was asking about that was just because there were two specific events referenced by Commissioner Moyer in his letter to the editor published in the Herald Times on June tenth, um,
Two what? Did you cut out? There were two what referenced by him?
There were two, there was two specific events referenced by Commissioner Moyer in his letter to the editor that was published on June tenth, specifically that Moreland, uh, demonstrated extreme insubordination with a verbal attack directed towards Commissioner Moyer while meeting with county attorney, and uh, that he flagrantly defied and ignored specific directives publicly given to all county road and bridge employees. So, um, I was able to hear one side of the story in some detail, uh, what I was hoping to get in the Cora request, and I realized maybe there isn't official documentation on this. Um, you know, what I was hoping to be able to do is to verify the side of the story, sort of the vague, uh, reference that Moyer made, as well as more detailed accounts of those events uh, with official county documents. So that was kind of the point of the Cora request, and that's why I was curious about, you know, if Moreland signed this waiver and release, if there would be, you know, more documentation regarding those, that was official and, you know, part of an official record, as opposed to uh, one person's word versus another, so, um, I guess, but I don't know if you have anything to, to add.
If, if I'm hearing your question correctly, um, for instance, uh, in, in his letter to the editor, Mr. Moreland relayed a couple of specific events, including one that happened in my office in Meeker. Um, and, um, you were hoping to find some county record to, to substantiate that event one way or the other. Un- unfortunately, um, I do not believe that making the executive sessions public um, will result in a waiver, um, of Mr. Moreland's rights as an employee. So if, if he still wants to keep that from the public eye, I think we have to do that. Now, let me make it clear that what happened in my office, um, uh, certainly I, I can understand why he wouldn't want that to be public, uh, but that was not part of an executive session. Um, so it, it's going to be, it, that's going to be, uh, up to Mr. Moreland, and, and Mr. Gilbert has no, no involvement in whether or not what transpired in that short meeting can become public or not. Um, so I, 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 I hope that kind of answers your question. I mean, there's, like, again, I'll, I'll say it again, there's, there's two levels. There's the open meetings law level, uh, and then there's Moreland's rights as an employee, um, a- and he can, he can still, as an employee, he can still shield his, his employ- his employment file. And, and, uh, I believe there were two letters that we, we disclosed, that there were two letters, but we didn't disclose the content. Uh, and we would still not be able to disclose that content absent a waiver from Mr. Moreland that, that would allow the county to, to, to do so. Uh, Kent or Don, let's just stop here again, make sure that, you know, e- e- either of you lawyers disagree with how I'm analyzing this? Don, I'll go with you first.
I agree with how you're, uh, analyzing it. I think that, uh, uh, the open rec- or the, uh, the executive session is completely different than the other exceptions to the, uh, any Cora request we may have received or may receive in the future. And so if, if we decide, as, as, as an executive session, that it was done improperly and needs to be an open meeting now, uh, those, uh, 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 you know, recordings that we have left or discussions, we get that what happened there, um, are open, but that doesn't, uh, uh, take away the other exceptions to Cora, for the Cora request.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, no, that, that all makes sense, and thank you for the explanation. I guess my concern primarily was from the perspective of, um, you know, trying to verify both sides of the story, if there was a waiver signed, and that potentially allowed, uh, both Mr. Moreland and Commissioner Moyer to more publicly reveal the details of specific events. Again, uh, my concern would just be that there would be one person's word versus another, as opposed to any official county documentation, which is why I was asking about that, but we can move on from that, um, because, you know, as you were noting, that's separate from the executive session. Um, so on, on the legality of, of Moreland's recordings, and if somebody's answers are in state statutes, or, you know, I, you referenced the sunshine laws, um, we can get them answered later in terms of specific statutes, and I'm happy to go through those. Uh, you can send me them later, if needed, but, you know, I know Colorado is a one-party consent state in terms of recording. Um, before I did print reporting, I did radio reporting, so I was aware of how those laws work. Um, I guess my question coming here today, you brought the the sunshine laws. My question coming here today was, or is there a state statute that supersedes the one-party consent rule specifically for executive sessions? So I think you, I think you said something along the lines of the sunshine laws basically stipulate that there is just one recording, that
Sorry about that, I'm, I'm not, I, I cut out there for a minute, I dropped you somehow.
No worries. Um, so just to be, just to clarify something that you said earlier, do the sunshine laws uh, specifically state that there can only be one recording made available, and, and that supersedes the one consent, one-party consent recording rule that exists in the state of Colorado, to your, to your knowledge?
Uh, to my knowledge, the Colorado Open Meetings Law says that there is, the, the board is required to record it, and, uh, it does not say specifically that there is to be just one recording. Um, but I, I, like I said before, I do know that what's said in executive session is supposed to remain in executive session, uh, and so to the extent that, um, and again, I, I want to be perfectly clear, there is no evidence that Dave Moreland committed a crime in recording those sessions. He had, he, quite frankly, um, you know, he asked permission and got permission, which, which tells me he probably didn't record them surreptitiously before, because why would you ask permission the second or third time if you hadn't asked for the first time? So my guess is he always asked permission and always got permission. Um, I, I have dealt with a case before, um, in Montezuma County, Colorado, where somebody um, put a cup up to the door and listened to an executive session, uh, and they were charged with a misdemeanor for that conduct. So I, I believe that if he, if, if John Doe, because I, I don't want, if John Doe recorded an executive session, um, and then took that recording outside of the executive session to his home, that, that violates the law. I cannot, I cannot, as I sit here tonight, today, cite you to, uh, book and page of where it says that. Uh, I, I can tell you that, um, I, I have, I have checked with some other county attorneys, and, and they all tend to agree with me. Not tend to, they all do agree.
So is it the case then, that, it is the case then, that the Board of County Commissioners would be required to give permission for a recording to take place, uh, in spite of the, the one-party consent rule for the state?
Just, I, I do not believe that the one-party consent rule overrules the Colorado Opens Meeting, Open Meetings Law, and quite the contrary. I think the open meetings- Meeting Open Meetings Law and quite the contrary, I think the Open Meetings Law um actually overrules the one-party consent um in 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 Colorado.
Okay, that was that was my question. Um thank you. Um, okay. Well, I don't think I had any more questions regarding those recordings. Um well, note for the record that uh I'm going to check through prior meetings and also I think you brought up a good point. This is kind of a candid statement. I think you brought up a good point about how the uh storage and deletion or, you know, destroying destruction of recordings is handled in other counties. I think that's something definitely worth looking into. Well, it's the number of executive sessions and the reason for those executive sessions. Um just for the for for note here, based on the minutes I checked, there were no executive sessions in 2017. There was one in 2018 where the uh employee in question chose to have the executive session in public. There were seven in 2019 and there were eighteen in 2020, although I will uh note that in 2020, there were a couple where I think they were for the exact same uh case, you know, one of the one of those cases that you were referencing earlier. So um that's something that I'll look into regarding minutes, you know, prior to 2017 as well as um how these things are handled in, I guess, our nearby counties and in other counties in the state. Um but yeah, that's all I have for now on executive so executive sessions. I may have more uh comments regarding the hostile work environment uh plans and stuff in a minute, but I'll let you talk about that first.
Hey, hey, Lucas, I I appreciate that, you know, and eighteen, it sounds like a high number. I get it. Uh but but the fact of the matter is, you know, Utah Gas, we had two different cases going on and um let's see, there were, I think, five, four million, eighteen million, eight million, sixteen million. There were at least five different offers that went back and forth. Uh and that each time an offer of settlement comes in, I have to meet with the board uh and go over that offer of settlement and get their response and go back to the opposing party. Um so so that that explains it to me pretty easily. And again, when when you're talking to other counties, um I hope you will I hope you will ask them how they handle the day-to-day oversight of property or supervision of employees by county commissioners uh exception because my rule of practice is whenever possible to notice that as executive session and that that may be backfiring on these commissioners because it may it may make it look like they're being secret when in fact they're actually being more transparent. Um and and I don't mind telling you that I think that's a a exception that every county uh and county attorney I know has a hard time dealing with, even in counties where there are county administrators. Uh and if you you take a county like Rio Blanco County that doesn't have an administrator, uh the commissioners have to do more day-to-day oversight. Uh and then you throw an attorney like me in the mix that says rather than just meeting in the hallway, let's let the public know that you're meeting in the hallway. Uh and that that makes it look like there's more executive sessions. So it'd be it'll be interesting to see what your research turns up. Um is there is there more on the executive sessions, Commissioner Gates, or would you like me to move on to the hostile environment discussion?
Yes, Kent had something he'd like to say.
Please.
Kent Borchardt, attorney for Dave Morland. Um we keep talking about all these executive sessions and without being specific about what we're talking about. And so I wanted to offer a little bit in the way of specifics. My understanding is that the county still has recordings for the January thirteenth and January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one sessions. And Dave also has copies of those two sessions. And you've already declared those are open meetings because they allowed the commissioners allowed Dave to report. Uh to the extent that there needs to be a release from Dave, he certainly would sign it, but I I think that it's probably at this point isn't needed. Um the only other meeting recording that Dave has is for the November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty meeting, which is only about eleven minutes long, involved Cy Woodruff, Gary Moyer, and Laura Smith. And the purpose of the meeting was to give Dave a letter of suspension. His knowledge, there was no warning or advertising about the meeting. Laura simply asked Dave if he had a minute. Um and if you later filed an affidavit related to that session. Again, Dave has no problem releasing to the extent a release is needed for that meeting. Other than those three meetings, he has no recordings and I don't think any recordings exist on the county side other than January thirteenth and fifteenth. As to uh a release for his personnel file, Dave has no problem signing a release, Todd, if you want to repair it. Uh he feels he has nothing to hide there. A lot's been made of his failure to sign a release. Um but Mr. Moyer keeps talking about things and bringing things up on Facebook, so there's no reason that any of that needs to be confidential. A lot of it will be he said, she said, which is typical in such situations, but uh feel prepare a release, Dave will sign it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Commissioner Gates, would you ask uh Mr. or Commissioner Roy Gilbert, am I correct that Roy Gilbert is also willing to sign a similar release?
I'm not sure. Is Roy on? Roy, are you on the phone?
Yeah, so, oh, all right.
Todd, do you want me to reach out to Roy or do you want to do that?
Well, let's go ahead and prepare the release today and then we'll get it out to Kent and let's make sure Kent's okay with it first, uh and then we'll send it to Roy um and and Dave and get their, you know, through Kent and get them to sign it.
Wait, we're talking, okay, I guess I'm confused. Are we talking there would be no reason for him to sign off on a release of Dave Morland's personnel records, right, or not? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, but to the extent to the extent the executive session talked about Roy's employment, he has a privacy interest in his in in the content of that discussion as well. And I just to protect the county, I want him to sign off on it too. So so my thought is that Kent and I come together on a on a release, it shouldn't be that hard. Uh and then once we have that, we'll get both of those guys to sign it and and we will we will release uh Dave Morland's file. We won't release Roy Gilbert's file, but the parties will be free to do the he said, she said, which I totally agree with Kent is gonna happen, um and 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 let them go about their conflict and and keep the county out of it as best as possible. Does that make sense, Vicki?
Yes, thank you.
Kent, you started to say?
No, I was just gonna ask if there's any other questions regarding executive sessions? Oh, I think we're good to move on, Todd.
All right, the next one is actually a lot harder and more troubling for me. Um i- if I'm not mistaken, one of the allegations in 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 both recall efforts has referred to the employee employer um in the employment environment at Rio Blanco County as a quote-unquote hostile environment. Um that's a term uh with some real significant potential consequences to the county. Um I I've been troubled by it for a while and I haven't been thinking about what how best to to advise the county. Um and look, if 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 I own a if I own a a business on Main Street and one of my employees says there's a hostile environment, um I I'm almost under a duty or an obligation to investigate that claim, um and then if appropriate, uh to take action. Um so the fact that that claim is being bantered out there, I I believe if the Board of County Commissioners, knowing that claim has been made public, just did nothing, um regardless of who wins the recall effort or not, uh then I then I think you are exposing, I think your lack of action exposes the county to potential liability. I I for the record, I want to be clear, I do not believe I've seen any evidence um of a valid claim of a hostile work environment, um but nonetheless, it's been made, uh and because it's been made, I think you as a Board of County Commissioners uh need to take some action to investigate the veracity um of that claim. Um that then you then you say, okay, who should do that? Well, I with all due respect to Laura Smith, um I don't think she should do it because she's in the building and um, you know, part of her responsibilities are are making sure that a hostile work environment doesn't exist. Um and I I think an independent third party uh would be best to do that. Um unfortunately, I think the board is looking at spending some real money, you know, ten grand, maybe plus, um to do that investigation. Um but I I think um we we are members of Employers Council, which used to be Mountain States Legal. They do that on a regular basis. Um I've I've had them do that with regard to an elected official in another county and they did a did a quick, thorough uh and good job. So um, you know, I I'm um, you know, it's I I I think I think you should do that. Um I I I would also be inclined to say that you should make the results of that investigation public, except I'm gonna stop short of doing that because the county does still have a threat of litigation from a former employee um where that may be a um may be a uh a a issue. And so consequently, um I think we're gonna need to loop in um the council appointed by the county's insurance, the attorney appointed by the county's insurance company before we make that public, um just to make sure it doesn't adversely affect uh adversely affect that litigation. Um so um that I I I think I think that's that's that. You know, th- those those investigations, um they can range price. Um the the one I did in in Archuleta County came in under ten. Um I've seen them as high as twenty to thirty. I think I think Attorney Sturman has experience in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range. I'm sure Mr. Borchardt has uh Kent has some opinion too uh as to what it might cost. Um but it's 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 gonna be some money, but at the same time, gentlemen, uh I would advise the commissioners that it's money very well spent because if you do nothing and then somebody does prevail on a claim of a hostile work environment, you're looking at paying out maybe in excess, well, in excess of hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um so it's a it's the prudent move for the county. Uh it's unfortunate um that that uh it's it's kind of an unintended consequence of the recall effort, I believe.
That's something that would fall under like our procurement policy where we would have to get a bid for that or?
Yes, it is. Or or you could authorize, actually, I and Don speak up here, but actually, the better way to do it is not through the procurement policy, but probably have one of the attorneys, probably have me go out and hire a firm to do it. And that way they're working for me and it it does remain attorney-client privilege so that that other person who is threatening litigation against the county could not get his or her hands on it. And that and that way it would not go through the procurement. You wouldn't have to do an RFP and we could get it a lot quicker. Do you agree with that, Don?
Yeah, I think so.
Kent, you got a problem with proceeding that way?
No.
So I think I think what I'm looking for today uh is is a motion from the board to declare all prior executive sessions involving Dave Morland and Roy Gilbert um as as being uh open open sessions uh and releasing whatever tapes or or record may exist of those sessions.
May I ask a question here or do you want me to wait till after formal motions made?
You can ask a question anytime you ever want.
Okay, okay, Todd, with logistics on that, um I'm pretty sure that there may be more than one topic discussed. So I just want to make sure if I, because I have not listened to those tapes, if I go in and have to edit that, of course, I'd say the original, but then make a copy of just, you know, minute one through five.
I don't I don't want you to edit the original tape. Uh I want you to get IT involved and probably the best thing to do is is sit in a closet and play play the recording uh of the executive session and record it on another recorder uh so that so that um that original tape is not messed with.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Right. Um but then in that situation, is it something you just want me and an IT person involved? Since it is an executive session, I don't want to bring, but I have not listened to it, so I don't I I want to make sure we maintain that executive session level.
They're being declared open meetings though, so executive session doesn't matter anymore.
Well, it does for only for that particular.
Yeah, it does matter to the extent we talked about something else in that session. Now, the ones the ones that I wasn't a part of, they obviously didn't talk about anything else, so those are easy. Um but the other the other one.
And again, are we just talking about two, January thirteenth and January fifteenth?
No, we're talking about all of them.
I think that's all there is, Todd.
Yeah. I I I think you might be.
Again, I I have a system. So I don't know what all the topics were there and I don't know if it was all just one discussion or if there were other, okay, now we're done with this one, you know.
No, there there wasn't. There wasn't because I wasn't involved in those sessions.
Okay.
So I I I think I think, Vicki, what you do is you go listen and and you confirm that there's no other topics discussed and if that's true, there's not an issue. If it is, if that's not true, there is another topic discussed, then circle back with me and I'll be in touch with Kent and we'll we'll make sure we we with Kent and I'll also loop Lucas in so that the paper, we're transparent with the paper, uh and we'll see how that works. We'll see what what will come up.
Okay.
All right, so now we need a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we direct our legal counsel to draft a a release for Dave Morland and Roy Gilbert for executive session meetings to be released uh to the public.
Executive session meetings and Mr. Morland's uh employment file?
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Sean, would you call the roll?
Rector?
Hi.
Gates?
Hi. All right, motion passes.
Then and then I I need a motion authorizing um Attorney Starr to procure an independent firm to investigate claims of a hostile work environment. And and gentlemen, I won't I won't pull the trigger on that without letting you know the 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 estimate cost.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we advise legal counsel to hire a third-party investigation team to investigate a hostile work environment for Rio Blanco County.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh Sean, would you call the roll?
Gates?
Hi.
Rector?
Hi.
All right, motion passes. Do you have anything else, Todd?
I do not, sir. I appreciate your time and everybody's time today. Don, do you have anything?
Thanks, everybody.
No, I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Okay. Kent?
Okay, Kent, do you have anything?
You know, I'd like to take the opportunity to say that I have never claimed there was a hostile work environment. I know that Mr. Moyer has said that on Facebook, uh, because I was totally surprised by my non-reappointment, of course, I didn't have any opportunity to claim any kind of hostile work environment, and I never experienced a hostile work environment, primarily because Mr. Moyer wasn't a commissioner yet. I'll just say that for the record. I don't need to be interviewed.
Okay. There any other